Okay. I'd like to call the County Board of Supervisors to order at 9:00 a.m. on July 28th. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
I got the wrong spot.
Austin's there.
Austin's here. My, oh, you've changed.
It's the haircut.
Start over.
Start over.
Start over.
Here, we're gonna just start over.
Okay.
It's easier.
There we are.
Good job, Dave.
It's all the support staff, you know?
They'll hit you.
Well, at least we didn't start before nine, right?
You can't start before.
I know.
Okay, let's try this again.
Okay, we got through this one.
This is not here.
You want it again?
Are you not paying attention?
Yeah.
Leo.
One, two, three, absent.
You gotta do it again. I was busy eating.
You have eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen here.
Okay. The rest of us are discussing.
Eighteen present, three absent. Presentation of the Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence. In your packet is two items, Wisconsin Historical Society from the State and National Registered Historical Places for the Lakeland Shipwreck, and the second item is the unassigned fund balance as of June 2015. Public comment. Does anybody care to make a public comment? Speak now, forever hold your peace. I have two items under public comment. First one is, if you're not aware of what happened with Chairman Austin, Dan had the emergency appendicitis operation on Saturday. I spoke with him this morning, visited him, he's doing well, he's at home recovering. He expects to be on the job probably later this week or early next week, once he gets released by the doctor. There is a card up here that if you haven't signed it, will be passed around, and we'll be sending out to him today. Ken?
I don't know when you talked to him, but an update, he's back at the hospital, having blood work done.
Okay, I saw him this morning at 8:30. I read 8:50.
Oh, I called him after that.
He went back?
Called him about 10:00, 10:20, and he was back at the hospital getting something about energy level, so, but he did sound much better, he sounded like himself.
Okay, good.
And he was complaining about losing out on his $150, so I called him. Well, I know you're getting better.
We could get him to phone in.
Maybe you can phone it in.
The second item I have is, it's a non-agenda item that, we cannot legally vote on this
today, but I'm gonna go ahead and read it and let this individual become aware of it, and we will make, the actual vote will take place at the next meeting when it's legal to do that. This is a resolution, it'll be 2015-66, it's in recognition and appreciation of the distinguished service of Grant P. Thomas. To the Door County Board of Supervisors, whereas by adoption of Resolution 2014-88, Grant Thomas Corporation Counsel was appointed to serve as interim county administrator commencing November 14, 2014, and whereas in addition to continuing to serve as Corporation Counsel, Grant Thomas agreed to serve as interim county administrator for no additional compensation, begin serving as interim county administrator on November 4, 2014, will continue to serve through August 2, 2015. Whereas during said nine-month period, Grant Thomas selfishly devoted countless hours of time at work and at home, both during the week and on weekends, diligently ensuring that the day-to-day functions of the county administrator's office would continue uninterrupted, while at the same time providing his usual commitment to excellence as Corporation Counsel. Now therefore, it be resolved that the County Board of Supervisors assembled this 28th day of July 2015, which will actually be sometime in August. Wholeheartedly extends to Grant P. Thomas our sincere thanks and appreciation for his dedication, devotion, exemplary service during his dual role as Corporation Counsel and interim county administrator. Everybody has signed it. So, thank you very much, Grant.
Thank you.
Are we legally allowed to give him a standing ovation?
We could do that, but we have one more thing.
Since he's now gonna have all this extra time, we thought we'd give you something to
enjoy it with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am truly surprised, and my unofficial comment is, thank you, I hope to make more articulate comments at the next meeting, but single malt scotch, that's away to my heart.
No supervisory response. Administrator's monthly report.
Consistent with my tradition, I will spare you any report, and leave that to Mr. Pabak, who will begin presumably next month.
Thank you. Approval of minutes of the June 23 regular meeting and July 14 special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion, additions, deletions, grammatically errors, other errors or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Pending business and updates. Approved fiber lateral agreement with Southern Door County School District and approved fiber lateral agreement with Sylvesterville School District. Turn this over to Dave Isk. Chair?
I would make a motion to approve both Resolution 2015-48 and 2015-49.
Second.
Any explanation?
Other than the fact that it's the continuation of the fiber optic connections between our trunks that we have an agreement with and the two school systems, Tim should be in the back, or Grant could give a further discussion.
No, the only additional comment I would make would be that one item of the agreement is yet up in the air, that has to do with the waiver of subrogation, paragraph 11. We're awaiting the Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation's response, yea or nay, to that. And also, the lateral agreement, which was a product of quite a bit of negotiation between myself and the school board's attorneys, will serve going forward as the agreement for any lateral connections to this particular fiber backbone, so, the first time an agreement is negotiated and crafted is usually the most difficult, but now again, we have a model that we can use going forward as the fiber backbone is installed throughout the county. So, there is a greater benefit to the agreement than just reaching an agreement with the two school districts.
Done.
So, would that entail then that we should have an amendment to the motion that hinges on what you just stated?
No, not necessarily. I think the waiver of subrogation is in there, and it can only be done with the consent of the insurance carrier, so there's no need for an amendment. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I'm sure that, not sure that everybody would have noticed that.
Anybody else? Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before we move to resolutions, we're going to move down the agenda item to number 13, Special Reports, Developmental Disability Long-Term Care Unit Staff Recognition.
I'm gonna ask Joe Krebsbach to come up if for nothing else to stop me if I start going too long. Actually, getting recognized throws me off, so I'm gonna be less articulate than perhaps I was otherwise. The only constant in life is change, and I think nowhere is that more true these days than in Wisconsin's long-term services. Cutting to the chase, starting August 1, this Saturday, Family Care and IRIS are coming to Door County. For those of you that don't know, Family Care and IRIS will replace the traditional means of delivery of long-term services in Door County. Those were traditionally delivered through the KIP, the Community Integration Program, and COP, the Community Option Programs. This represents a fairly significant change, but in many respects, a change for the better. The theory behind Family Care and IRIS is to deliver more cost-effective services to more people, and to give the people that benefit from those services more choices in terms of where they live, and in terms of their providers, and the services that they receive. In terms of long-term care services, for those of you that don't know, and it's not for necessarily the supervisors, I know you're all aware, but the county is responsible through the state to provide long-term care services for adults who are physically disabled, have an intellectual development or developmental disability, or are frail seniors that meet certain functional eligibility and asset and income criteria. As I said, IRIS and Family Care have many positive aspects, I think it's something that we've long looked forward to. I think there's only seven or eight additional counties that are administering the COP and KIP programs, so we're near the end of the line for counties that are implementing Family Care and IRIS. But one of the distinct downsides of Family Care and IRIS is that the county has to say goodbye to the seven staff members that Joe is gonna talk about later today, and it's not that they're leaving their vocation or their profession, they will continue to provide very important services to those that need long-term care services, they simply will do it through Family Care, and that necessarily means through a managed care organization. So, the purpose of today, I guess, is to recognize the effort of the staff that is being recognized, and also to usher in a new era of long-term support services in Door County, that being Family Care and IRIS. One last comment, change is constant, in the last budget bill, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, there are additional changes coming down the line to Family Care and IRIS. IRIS will eventually be phased out over the next two-year period, the state has to draft rules, those rules have to be approved by the federal government, and that'll take at least two years, I guess, in most people's estimation. So, without prattling along or around any longer, I'll introduce Joe.
Well, he serves as a county administrator, and he's got it all, I mean, he nailed that stuff. He said it perfectly. Nice job, Grant. So, when I started as the Director of Human Services eight years ago, my first meeting out of town, first week I was here, was about the transition to Family Care, and I met with seven county directors, and we planned how we were gonna do this, and we thought it was gonna roll out a couple of times since then. That was eight years ago. And as Grant indicated, there's some positives, there's some real positives going forward with this, but the negative piece, at least for the folks who are part of our team that was providing that services, is that they needed to move on. Some of those folks have worked with us for 20 years, were hoping to retire here, as part of their plan. So, it's kind of with mixed emotions that I'm up here today to say thank you to the folks who have provided these services to our individuals for the past 30 years. So, Grant covered the folks that we serve and what we did, and so I will move into just talking about the individuals who have worked here and have been part of the long-term care and developmental disability teams. And we're gonna recognize seven people who are no longer gonna be working for the county, but before I do that, I also wanna recognize the folks who are still gonna remain with us and who are part of that team. And I would have to start with the supervisor, Ms. Cindy Zellner-Ailers. She has been the director, or the supervisor of our developmental disability program for about 30 years, and she has led an amazing team, she has trained some fantastic social workers. When the Family Care came about, and we knew we were finally transitioning this time, 'cause we, like I said, we thought we were going in 2012, and, but when it finally happened, the managed care companies started doing interviews to hire the social workers to take those new jobs that they were creating. And I got a call from both managed care companies, but a quote from one of the managers who did the interviews was, "We interviewed all the staff from all seven counties, and your county is the only county where we made an offer to every employee. Your staff were above and beyond the other six counties in terms of their professionalism and their understanding of the programs." Talk about a proud moment. I didn't have anything to do with training them, but Cindy did, and so she did a great job with that. I also want to acknowledge Sue Scheider. Sue has been with the county, and I don't even know how long Sue was here, she was here when I started 18 years ago, she retired in there, but she came back to help us out with this transition, 'cause there was a huge workload in moving from our current system to the new system, so thanks to Sue as well. We also have a young lady by the name of Natalie Jackson, and Natalie is an LTE that's been working with the county, and she's gonna stick around with us for a little, about another month as we continue to work through this transition, so she's been very helpful in that process. I also want to acknowledge Kathy Zach, she is one of our support staff. Kathy's workload has been huge in this transition, she has literally put together 180-plus two-inch binders of material on all the consumers that are going from our system to another system to make sure that we transfer all the information that we need to get. So those four ladies are still gonna be with us at some level, or have already retired and have just been helping out, but I wanted to acknowledge them as well. When I was thinking about this, I wanted to talk about all seven people individually, and I'll skip that, 'cause that would take me a long time. Cindy has a saying, "It's all about relationships," and so we formed some awesome relationships with these people, and again, some of these ladies were here when I started working here. So I've known most of these people for some, for just a couple of years, and some for over 20 years, so it's pretty awesome to be able to acknowledge the work that they've done. So when I was thinking about them as a group, and trying not to give you information about each one of them specifically, I was trying to come up with some words that really described how I saw them as a group, and I would start out with my first word being professionals. These ladies have been, ladies, and Bob, sorry, Bob. These ladies have been hearing about Family Care for at least 15 years, and at some points thinking, "Oh, my job's gonna end, and it's gonna be a year from now, or it's gonna be two years from now." And during that time, they didn't waver in terms of how they cared for people, they didn't, it didn't affect their ability to continue to do their jobs, including in the last year and a half, as they knew it was coming, they still continued to just do the The other word I would use is dedication, and again, the work that they've done in the last year just is test to that dedication. When we knew we were going to Family Care, we had over 80 individuals who were on a waiting list, and some of those individuals have been on that waiting list for over 10 years. So, during this transition, we have a group of individuals who know that they're losing their jobs, they're gonna go away, they gotta figure out, "Where do I go in my life? What do I do next?" They are training, 'cause they've landed jobs, most of them in the managed care companies, some in other places, they've all landed other jobs, but while they were training for these new jobs, they're now here only four days a week. We had some people that left a little bit earlier, we had some people that were out on maternity leave, and we have been running short-staffed for years. But during that time, while we were short-staffed and they were working four days instead of five, we took that waiting list and moved it from 80 to 50, so above 80 to about 50 individuals right now, as we transition on Saturday into Family Care, who remain on our waiting list. By February of next year, if our projections are correct, all of those individuals will finally be off the waiting list and into Family Care Services. But that transition of those 30 people was all about the work that these folks did, and to me, that dedication is amazing. And the last word I'll use to describe these people is compassionate. Cindy talks about "it's all about relationships," I have had opportunity to watch every one of these people interact with their clients. We work with people who sometimes are a joy to work with and sometimes are frustrating to work with, they don't necessarily wanna do what's in their best interest, or whatever. These ladies, and Bob, approach these individuals with such compassion and care that it's just a joy to watch. So, as these folks are leaving, I wanna say, you've had a great team to provide these services over the years, we should be proud as a county of what they've done, and it's a loss to the Department of Human Services, because they're just great people, and it's a loss to the county, because we're losing great employees who are dedicated to what they do and have done it through some tough times. So, we'd like to acknowledge each of them, and Dave's gonna present them with a certificate of appreciation. I also wanna mention, I know that you guys had some committee meetings this morning that you, that didn't allow you to come and join us, and some of you may have even poked your head in and wondered what the celebration was going on, it's about saying thank you to these folks, so I invite you to come back after the board meeting, and please join us for some treats and a chance to say thanks to the folks who have been providing these services. You wanna read the names, or would you like me to?
Read the names.
Okay. First, I'd like to acknowledge Bob Desatelle. Bob, if you wanna come on up, and I'll ask all of you to come up, and Bob, if you wanna just wait up here, maybe in the front. Bob has provided our Adult Family Home Certification, I'm not exactly sure even how long, I know for at least eight years he's been doing that for us. Caitlin Kubaki. Caitlin is one of our developmental disability case managers, and she has been with the department for over four years. Linda Stone-Winter. Linda's really our last person who started out with the frail elderly folks, Linda's been with us for nine years. Megan Schmidtman. Megan came to us fresh out of college and got a chance to work with the great team, Megan was with us a little over a year.
Thanks, Joe.
You bet. Luann Desatelle. Luann is the case manager with the longest tenure here, she was here when I started, this year was her 20-year anniversary with the county. So... Patty Chek, another one of our developmental disability case managers. Patty, I'm not even sure, Patty has been with the county officially, I think, 15 years, but she was here a couple years before that as a contracted employee, so about 17, she started right around the time I did, I've been here a little over 18, so right after I started, Patty came on. And Amber Stiles, and Amber has been with us for a couple of years, again, right out of school, and been a great asset to our team. So, please, help me acknowledge them with some thanks for what they've done for our clients.
I have just one brief comment. I just wanna say thank you very, very much from, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the community, for everything you've done over all these years, we appreciate it very, very much, and good luck to you in the future. Thank you. Okay, back to item number 11, Resolutions. Resolution 2014-63, Agreement with Wisconsin DOT Regarding Continuously Operating Reference Station. Speak to that?
Sure.
Came from the Property Committee?
This is a continuation of an agreement we've had with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, it's been in effect, I think, roughly since at least 2007. There is a continuously operating reference station in place out at the Justice Center campus, I guess is the best way to describe it, and that has been out there, as I said, since January 2007. This agreement will allow the continuously operating reference station to stay there in perpetuity until one of the parties cancels the agreement, and it is at no fiscal impact to the county, and the county does receive the benefit of the use of the cores system, so, if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer those, but that's the extent of my knowledge about the cores.
Leo?
Are we gonna update the contract, or whatever? We have an administrator on there that's no longer here, I have a person who's head of maintenance.
Yes. Yeah, we will strike the names of the former employees and insert the correct ones. The agreement was prepared by the Department of Transportation and was based on the information they had from 2007, likely, so...
True to form, they're about a 10-year program late.
Ken, we need someone to make a motion in a second.
I'll sort.
Kathy?
Okay.
Any discussion? We're gonna go to the voter board for this one.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that was cute. Was that all?
Done?
I'm not done.
What? They're still voting.
That has passed, 18 yes, three absent. Resolution 2014-64, Adopting Use of Force and Nonviolent Demonstration Policy. Grant?
This came up in the context of the Community Development Block Grant, and was moved forward by the Community Development Block Grant Housing Consortium that we joined in 2012. The policies A and B, from line 14 through line 22 on the resolution, must be in place prior to August 14. August 14 is the date that the new regional, regional community development block grant housing application is due. If anybody has any questions about the policies, but it is a requirement of us participating in the Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Go to the voter board. That has passed, 18 yes, three absent. Next item is the Capital Improvement Plan for 2016 through 2020. I'm assuming everybody has a copy of it and went through it. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck?
Second.
Roy? Any discussion? Biz?
I can't support this at this time. I think we're way ahead of ourselves, because the department's, all the budget stuff for 2016 isn't in, and my problem that I have with this is they're putting money into these building projects... Resolution 201464, Adopting Use of Force in Nonviolent Demonstration Policy. Grant?
This came up in the context of the Community Development Block Grant and was moved forward by the Community Development Block Grant Housing Consortium that we joined in 2012. The policies A and B, from line 14 through line 22 on the resolution, must be in place prior to August 14th. August 14th is the date that the new regional community development block grant housing application is due. If anybody has any questions about the policies, but it is a requirement of us participating in the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second by Don. Any discussion? We'll go to the voter board.
Susie, pick confirm.
That has passed. 18 yes, three absent. Next item is the Capital Improvement Plan for 2016 through 2020. I'm assuming everybody has a copy of it and went through it. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck?
Second.
Roy? Any discussion? Biz?
I can't support this at this time. I think we're way ahead of ourselves, because the department's, all the budget stuff for 2016 isn't in. And my problem that I have with this is they're putting money into these building projects out of our undesignated fund for next year and for 2017. And I'm not on the Finance Committee, but it appears that this is levy money. And in the last couple of years, the board has struggled with doing more cuts, because there isn't enough money to run the government. And yet, you're taking money, levy money out, and putting it into projects where you can borrow money. And it's good that we're putting money aside, but the amounts of money that we're putting there, to me, is tying your hands behind your back and then going to all the departments and saying, "Cut, cut, cut. We don't have enough money." Because you're taking money out, and that's why I feel we're ahead of ourselves on this CIP. I hope everybody in this room looked at everything, all these projects. And I think at this point in time here in July, we're too early to approve this until we see more where we're at with, when the departments come in with all their final figures. And I guess as far as the highway projects, I guess my question is to the Highway Committee. They go around and they inspect these roads, and do they have anything to do with the ratings? I look at the ratings of the roads and how the projects are laid out, and some roads to me, and I haven't been on all these roads, but apparently the supervisor of the Hot Mix has a lot to do with these ratings, and do they agree with the ratings? And I just, at this time, I'm not against the projects for the community center. I'm not against the EMS projects, but what I'm against is that they're appropriating all this money. If this gets passed this morning, then our hands seem to be tied in coming back the last couple of years and saying, "Well, every department has to cut so much percentage," because there isn't enough money. And yet, there's money taken out for these projects, and I just think we're ahead of ourselves.
I'll make a comment back on behalf of the Finance Committee for the process. The process every year is that the CIP is always done first. The departments put their project list together. It comes to finance. Finance previews it, sends it back to the departments to relook at it, comes back to finance again, which happened this month for our review and approval. It then goes into the tentative budget, and it's approved by this body today. This board will have another couple of cuts at it before the final budget's approved, so this may change. But the idea is always put the capital improvement projects in place first, and then they work in the operational budget. As far as unassigned fund dollars, they cannot be used for operational items. They can only be used for capital items, and that's why you see unassigned fund dollars coming into the CIP. As far as the two building projects, everybody is aware, we've got the community center and the ambulance service building coming up. The Finance Committee has not made final determinations yet how that will be funded. That's all part of the process as we go forward into the November approval and the public hearing on the budget. So, this board will have another opportunity to look at and discuss both the CIP and the budget as it moves forward, but this is just one piece in the puzzle as we go.
Well, I guess what I don't understand, Mr. Chairman, is that you're saying that this money in the undesignated fund cannot be used for the operations of the government. And yet, you have an incident with the Sheriff Department where we had a missing person. I don't know if the sheriff will go over budget or not. I'm looking for this individual, but I can tell you that any big incident that happens of he's short of money, it's going to come out of the undesignated fund, because we pay our bills. The same thing is going to happen with the Highway Department. These budgets are more of an estimate of what they're going to need. They don't know what kind of a winter there's going to be, and if they run $150,000 over budget, it comes out of that fund, and that's levy money. And you're saying it can't be used for that? Well, but it is used for that.
Well, it's a matter of shifting it. We have contingency funds, which are different than the unassigned fund balance.
The chairman tells us over and over, "Oh, we've got to do more cuts, more cuts, more, cut more people, cut services, because there isn't enough money." But you're taking the money where you can borrow money and putting it into these projects.
Anybody else? Leo?
Just, Biz asked the question whether or not the Highway Committee has any say on the rating of the highway. And in the past year, Roy and John and Ken realized that we did make some rating changes in the Paser program. I believe Joel was down there as well. And it happened, was it County Trunk O or Double O in the South? This year, there was more of a change as far as what was going to be accomplished. The Paser rating is only a system and evaluation of what's there. So, it's the five people on highways versus John Klowgi as the commissioner versus whoever in his department does it. I don't agree with everything the Highway Committee came up with as far as which road. In fact, I lobbied heavily to include work this year on Double H north of Cherry School, only because it's in my town. No, because I travel the road more than on occasion, and I find that it's breaking up, and it's not in the very best of shape. But that's why we have five members on the board on a committee. And this happens that John Naitis from south is the chairman, and he came forward with roads down south, and we always listen to the chairman. So, we just kind of moved that one ahead rather than another. I think the other concern that we had was we fast-forwarded some of the projects that we feel should be looked at or done immediately. Roy would be a good example in his area. And the same thing here would be for Glidden Drive or County Trunk Highway T. A good portion of that lies in the area that Biz represents and also my town. Part of that was accomplished a year ago or two. I've heard comments from others stating that we can't really do too much there until we widen that road, and that would be a whole bunch of tree cutting, and I don't think anybody would love that. It's a process, and it's a work in progress, I would say. We're eventually not going to have enough money to do all our highways, but we try to do it piecemeal. I don't know if that's the best, but I see that it's been delayed from next year through 2018, which might be a little bit too much. But I'm sure the Highway Committee can bring it back and take another look at it and listen to the concerns of others who live out there.
That's all I have. Susan?
This is just a clarification. You'll be giving us some numbers to put into the resolution when we get there.
Yes.
Okay.
John?
Well, I feel I better add a little comment here.
No, you're not alone.
Yes, I am. The chairman of the Highway Committee is from the South, and we did do a road down south, as it was mentioned. But remember, there's five people in that committee, and those five people made the decision that that road was in need of being fixed, not because it was in the South, but because of the condition of the road. That's all I want to say.
Anybody else?
To fill in the numbers on the resolution, tax levy amount for the CIP would be $3,79,424, Long-term financing projected is $5,100,000. Unassigned fund balance, $812,550, 812550. Other funding, $4,510,004, 510000. For total CIP projects, $13,501,974, 13,501,974.
Have a motion in a second. We'll go to the voter board.
You'd be proud of the change down the line, but this would be for the entire budget.
That passed. 16 yes, 2 no, 3 absent. Coordinates is none? New business? Any oral committee reports? Review of committee minutes? Review of vouchers, claims, and bills? The only announcement I have is next county board meeting is Tuesday, August 25th at 9:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, has the county board lately had a county board meeting in Washington Island? I know in my last term, when I was on the county board, we had a county board meeting over there, which was very, very helpful to the citizens of Washington Island. And Washington Island is part of Door County, and I would like to see at some point that we do have a meeting over there.
How about we refer that to Admin Committee? Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further business, speak transact. I'd like to make the motion. We adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Randy? All in favor?
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Thank you.